It's Tuesday, February the 21st of 2017. I would like to call the meeting to order. And before we get started on the law enforcement, Rob, could you come up, please? I have something I want to hand to you. and the comedian kind of jumped all over Rob and called him the pothole guy. So, we had to give him a new name tag.
I think he said a little bit more than that, but this is a public meeting, so.
Very clean. Okay. So, did I call the meeting to order? If not, I have called this meeting to order and we are going to jump on to number two, presentation on Law Enforcement Behavioral Deflection Program for Cottington County. Sarah Peterson, Director of the Cottington County Welfare Office, along with Sergeant Steve Rehorse. Perfect. Welcome, folks. I'll let you just take it on.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right. I was gonna bring him a picture of him working at the banquet, but I was kind enough and did not, so.
That would've been good, because we've never seen Bruce actually work before.
Okay, this one's different. How do I do my?
Remember, I have not had a Diet Coke for five days, so this could be a wild meeting. Yes. I've stuck to it, yes.
Mine's up on the top. All right. Can you hear me okay now, Bruce? All right. Everybody else hear me okay? All right. I'm not yelling. Thank you for your time tonight, and I know that you guys are really busy, so I'll do my best to keep it short and sweet and hopefully painless. We're here to talk about, tonight, about the Law Enforcement Behavioral Deflection Program. But to start with, kind of to do a little bit of introduction of how this even came about. In June of 2015, Cottington County passed a resolution to sign on to the National Stepping Up Initiative. And this is a national initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in our county jails. The problem is, over 1.1 million people with mental illnesses are arrested each year. Persons with serious mental illnesses are overrepresented in the U.S. jails and prisons. Our council state government in 2012 said 17 percent. Seventy-two percent of those have a co-occurring comorbid substance use problem. Our two largest psychiatric facilities in the country are the L.A. County and Cook County jails. And we know that there's a problem, and we know we gotta fix how we're doing things. People with severe mental illness, they tend to spend more time incarcerated pre-trial. They serve more of their sentences, and they have parole revoked for technical violations more often than individuals without a severe mental illness. So, with that, the stepping up initiative, some of our goals is to reduce the number of people with mental illness in the jail, rehabilitate inmates with mental illness, and use human resources effectively. Just to give a clarification, in the United States, one in five people have some sort of severe mental illness, and then in the jail, it's an average of one to three. And I wasn't counting. I'll let you guys have the conversation later which one in five it is, so. With the stepping up, some of the accomplishments that we've started and made is we formed a stepping up initiative committee. We meet monthly on a regular basis. We have representatives that the judge, parole, city police, sheriff, probation officers, the mental health agency. We have an outlying group that includes the South Dakota Department of Social Services and Behavioral Health. We have the Department of Corrections, State Department, and Department of Parole. Who else am I missing? I don't know. That's about, okay. On that, that work with us and provide us some advice. We've done some mental illness, sorry, I gotta back up. We hired a mental health worker in the jail. That was our first stop, just to even start, to just even say if, can we do some screenings to identify how many people in our jail have a mental illness? Along with that, he does assessments and case management with diagnosis. One of the things that he does very well for us is de-escalations, which would result, reduce number involuntary commitments we've had in our jail. And that, we used that opportunity also to get other data. What we discovered is about 66 percent of our inmates have a mental illness. Oh, is it not gonna do this for me? That screen should say, it should roll, but it's not. Out of that, 22.2 of those individuals have a severe mental illness, and 44.4 have what we identify as a moderate. What that equates to is, we have approximately 17 inmates on a daily average in our jail with some sort of mental illness, so we know we can have an impact. So, then our next step is, this is kind of our, it's a sequential intercept model where you have different intercepts to have impact. The mental health worker is intercept three. We have some things in work for the intercept five at getting them out and reducing recidivism. But this program that I'm gonna talk about is working on intercept one. We know that if an individual has a jail stay of three or more days, they have an increased likelihood of to recidivate anywhere from 40 to 60 percent. So, if we can kind of make contact and reduce that before we can even get into the jail, we have a lot of impact that we can have pre-arrest, just on that effect there. So, the behavioral defection, bleh, that's a big word. Behavioral Deflection Pilot Program is, we're looking at, we still need ways to reduce the numbers of mentally ill in the jail. And we're looking at ways that we can identify and address gaps in our community. And this is an area where we've identified that. And it's helped reduce redundant interactions with law enforcement and emergency services. Currently, how it stands, if a law enforcement comes into contact with somebody having a mental health situation or behavioral health situation, they have three options. They can arrest, they can do an involuntary commitment, or they can de-escalate and leave the person as is. Now, if they de-escalate, which means calms the person down to where they're not a threat or harm to themselves or somebody else, there is no follow-up at this time. We don't do, there's nothing in the community, there's no funding for outreach services to have that follow-up contact. So, this program is to help that. And a lot of times, I think, Steve, you can talk to what happens, and I'm putting him on the spot. So, Steve, if you just wanna talk to what kind of happens on your end of it.
Well, a lot of times what happens when we end up on scene, you know, like she said, if we don't have enough where we say they're an immediate danger to themselves or others, or we take them into custody and have them evaluated, or if they're not arrested for a crime of some sort, then they're left, they're left there on scene. You know, maybe they're not a danger to themselves or others, but we can still tell that they would benefit from some sort of help. And a lot of times, those individuals sometimes fall through the cracks, and it's happened in different instances where we'll deal with those same people on an ongoing basis. Again, it's not enough where we're gonna take them into custody or do anything, but we still deal with them. And eventually, sometimes that, their behavior escalates to a point where they do end up having a contact with us, where they end up in jail, or something like that. So, the goal of this program is to take that initial contact with them, and then have someone, get them in touch with some resources to make sure they are, you know, if there's, whether it's medication, or some therapy, or something that they could work with someone on, to hopefully prevent those future contacts from escalating to a point where they would end up in jail, or something like that. So, the goal is to get them help before it becomes a bigger issue.
And we anticipate that'll help reduce redundant interactions with the law enforcement emergency services. Oftentimes, I've heard the law enforcement say, we know the direction they're going, there's nothing we can do about it, and there's no services there. We also want to get them engaged in services before they burn bridges. Sometimes those bridges can burn, is your family support, those peers' supports. And if we can, the earlier we can intervene, the better we can help provide some support to even the family. How do you cope with that? How do you deal and get them that help as well? To help increase those services for people with those mental health situations, so that it doesn't lead to an arrest. Sometimes you might have a situation after 12 times, maybe that individual get aggravated, and then you get an assault, they get an arrest based on that mental health. Our target population are mental health contacts that do not lead to arrests. They're individuals that are cleared on scene, kind of like what Steve said. They don't fit the commitment criteria, they're not either that high enough, or they were able to calm them down. And I do have to give the law enforcement, both the sheriff and the police department, just a positive input on their crisis intervention training. They do an excellent job in our community at de-escalating those situations. So, a shout-out of, a compliment to them.
And what she's talking about, there's crisis intervention training, so if someone makes a statement that they're gonna harm themselves, or something to that effect, there's a number of officers that are specially trained. Myself, I've done it, I've been trained, and what we'll do is we'll go on scene, we'll spend anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour and a half, two hours, speaking with this person, to determine that we can clear them and say, no, they're not an immediate danger to themselves, so they can be allowed to stay at their home, rather than take them into custody and do something further that way. So, that has been a huge, huge benefit to our community as well.
And then, individuals that aren't connected to services, because we don't want to duplicate services for that, are the target. Our goals and benefits for the program is to improve outcomes for the mentally ill, see cost savings due to lower incarceration rates, improve officer safety, time savings throughout the criminal justice and treatment processes. And that's, this is the synopsis of the program, and later on tonight, the city council, that's where we have the request for the memorandum of understanding, so. Any question, if, I'm open to any questions, if you have any.
Steve, when you talked that you have, some of your officers are trained, what, I mean, how many, or what percentage, or?
Our goal eventually is to get every single officer in the department trained in that. It's a 40-hour class that we do, typically do one eight-hour day for five weeks in a row. They actually have actors that come in and act as though if they're experiencing some sort of mental health disorder, and we have to, you know, work with them and figure out what's going on. I want to say maybe, probably about a third of our department right now is, if someone isn't trained in that, typically what happens is, if someone makes a statement they want to harm themselves, we typically take them into custody, bring them to Serenity Hills or the detention center, until someone from probably the Human Service Agency can come and evaluate them. So, this way, we do that right on scene, with either we sit at their house, or in a squad car, and we just speak with them, and go through our training, and try and determine what the best course of action would be to help them.
How many people a year do you think are sent through the hospital? The reason I ask that, I've just seen an article here not too long ago, that, I think, I believe it was in Pennington County, correct me if I'm wrong, where the hospital is actually turning them away?
That I'm not sure. I know, as of 2012, when I've done training, and the numbers haven't changed a whole lot, but I figure that about once every three days, our department responds to either a completed suicide, a suicide threat, or a suicide attempt, once every three days. And so, those are just those things. So, we do these things, you know, quite often, so there's a strong, and so, the idea behind this, too, is if I clear someone, and I say they're okay to be left, then what we would do is we get them in contact with someone, even though they've been cleared, we still want to put them in contact with some resources that are available.
I know the safe room at Serenity Hills is really taking care of, or helped you guys with a lot of that, but.
And it has, and that, in the past, the only option was the detention center, which almost criminalizes the behavior, which it shouldn't be. So, the Serenity Hills safe room has been just a great resource for us to have available.
I can't even imagine being at the lowest point of your life and then taken to jail. What percentage, I'm glad that you guys are going through this training. When you come on scene, to be able to clear somebody, either through, clear them, or incarcerate them, or take them out to Serenity Hills, how, percentage-wise, how effective is that becoming? Because I know some of you have been trained for quite some time now, and I would assume that it's getting easier, or easier is never the right word. There's, the percentage of successes is increasing? Would that be a fair statement, or?
I would say so. I don't have the exact numbers, but I know myself personally, I've cleared people where they've been able to go about their daily business and activities and things like that, versus, you know, going to jail, or going to Serenity Hills, you know, and so that's, that's a success. Because the whole goal is to, you know, keep them out of being incarcerated, keep them out of those, and just get them in touch with the resources and that, so.
And then, can I add, or, and some of these individuals aren't that, the criteria for that crisis intervention, some of these individuals may not be at that level. It might be more of a behavioral, you might have an individual that their tub is constantly overflowing, you know, just where the officers are constantly getting called into. Those are some that we're lurking at, too, to see if we can get them connected before it gets to a bigger incident.
When you were talking about connecting them with services, how is that? I mean, how adequate or inadequate are the availability of services for these individuals right now in the area?
We're being told that the services are adequate. The issue becomes is this is, there's no money for outreach. So, basically, what the law enforcement can do right now is say, here, you can call Human Service Agency, or Lutheran Social Services. We're wanting to take more of an aggressive approach, assertive approach, and reaching out to them. And kind of just saying, is there something we can help you with? You know, we know you had a call last night, is there something we can help you with? And kind of, what we do is called some of that motivational interviewing, trying to identify maybe areas that they might want to work with. Because one of the issues with mental illness is, it's one of those illnesses that people don't actually, deny that they have. It'd be like having cancer, but you deny that you have it, and it can progressively get worse. That can be the case. And so, sometimes you have to kind of go through a side door, develop some, meet some of their other needs, whether it's housing, or food, or other things like that, and looking at their incentives. What are they looking to get, to get out of that, to move forward, before you can even address the mental illness? So, right now, the issue becomes is there is no funding from the state that comes down for that outreach services. And nationally, we've seen that these have been effective programs to have that outreach.
Mayor, could I ask a question? Mayor? Be all right if I ask a question?
Just for clarification purposes, Ms. Peterson, there's an item on the agenda tonight for a letter of support. Would you be willing to speak briefly to why that's required, and for what purpose?
Sure. The letter of support is for our sequential intercept model application. And I will go back here, couple screens. What that, we have an opportunity to have a day and a half training coming to our community. Last year, we made our application, there was about 74, five, four were selected, and we tottered between four and five, and we ended, landed fifth, unfortunately. So, we were told to reapply again this year. And what that intercept does is, it brings, our, what that training does is, it brings together some professionals with the policy research associate, and I've had the fortunate opportunity to be part of the Behavioral Leadership Academy, worked with them about a year and a half as well, to identify areas in the intercepts that we have the potential to, to make contact, and make effect and impact to reduce the mental illness in the jail. And with that letter of support, we'll submit that, with that application, and if we get that training, it'll put together for our county an action plan of what we have, talking about exactly what we have for resources, how we're using resources, are there better ways to use it, identifying any potential places we can have that, that impact as well.
Well, thank you, folks.
I do have a comment, Mayor, if you don't mind. First off, I'd just like to thank you, Sarah, for kind of spearheading this whole activity. You and I've had discussions about this outside of this, and I think it's, however the city or the county can throw support that way, I think it is great. I think it's a really good, good idea, it's a good program. What our officers are doing in this regard, too, I wasn't aware we were doing that kind of training. I think that's very, very, very good. But also, while you're here, I'm gonna use this platform, because I think people that do a lot of volunteer work need a little bit of recognition, because you, your husband, your kids consistently come to that banquet. And that's a lot of work, and I just want to say thanks in public for your efforts in that regard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you, and I know that, Steve, your group, the law enforcement, has been working on this. I think this just takes us to another, another level that is really needed here in Watertown. So, thanks again for being here, and then we'll, we'll look at that, that tonight on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
One last comment, sorry, Steve. It would be interesting to know, as we go along, what the impact of these programs are in terms of cost effectiveness, you know, because if we're talking about resources, and outreach resources, and some of the things that we really would need to fill in, I would believe that as we get more effective at this, you're going to see a better allocation of resources for these services. And it would be nice to see a year from now, or two years from now, what kind of, you know, because I know even the CIT training has already impacted those things. So, it'd be nice to have you come back and say, hey!
Yes, and that's part of the memorandum of understanding, is collecting that data, because one of our long-term goals is, as we see savings in one area, to put it into another area that needs it to continue to grow. And, you know, if you don't track it, that money gets, gets lost. And part of this came about, too, with the CIT, that was our question, how effective are we? And just improving, consistently improving our data and tracking that, so we can show what is working, and also what is not working.
Do you have any idea what the, the follow-up is? I know Steve said that he has them call Human Service Agency, or Lutheran Social Services. That seems to be the issue all the time, isn't it? People get help, and they come back into the environment without any follow-up. So, how many of these people actually can get help from Human Service, or somebody?
You know, it's hard to tell until you actually know, see that person, what their situation is, but I know a lot of times, too, we can tell them to go and call this number, and sometimes it takes more than that, it takes someone to actually go and, you know, here's some information, you know, and give them those, you know, have you thought about this, or this, you know, and get them into that treatment. A lot of times, too, the first time they maybe go into treatment, it doesn't always work the first time, but to, you know, to get that ball started, and get that going in the right direction is, is the whole goal of the program. And there's been times in the department where we've dealt with someone, and we'll continually deal with them, maybe on a daily basis, or every couple days, for, you know, weeks, then eventually they end up in jail. So, hopefully, our goal is to stop that, maybe after the first time, and put them in contact, and like you said, again, we have our resources being better utilized, and we can be out doing other things, and that person's been helped.
Basically, what you're doing with this program, that you don't do now, is, now you're in contact with somebody, you give them the information, and the people to contact, now that you're just turning it around and having the people contact them. Because, you know, saying goes, you can lead a horse water, you can't make him drink. But, back to the police department part, I remember one night, I did a ride along with the police department, and it was domestic, and there was a threat of suicide, and the individuals ended up taken to the Serenity Hills. But, it was, it was a good 45-minute discussion with two officers, and I commend the way they totally handled the situation, and total respect, and, you know, because everybody's, everybody's life matters, put it that way, so, and they are real people, so.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, folks. We're gonna move along here, and thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Okay. Number three, discussion, or Public Library Annual Report Survey is required by the SDCL 14-2-40. Mike, you're up, buddy.
Thank you. I'm going to hopefully take a lot less time, because I know you need to talk about the mall thoroughfare.
Perfect, thank you.
We want that fixed up. But I, there, the document is actually attached to your agenda for this, and I don't know how much time you've actually got to spend looking at it, and managed to stay awake through. But there's a few things on the screen here that I would like to point out. Just kind of, one comment. This is a report that we submit every year. We've submitted this every year that I've been here. In about two years, we'll see the results of it. It gets compiled at the federal level. But just right here, let's look, registered borrowers, we're seeing, this is per capita. We're seeing .4 per capita. The state average is .5. So, we're a little bit lower there. Library visits per capita, we're seeing 5.6. State average is 5.1. Let's go down, total circulation per capita, we're at 10.7. The state average is 7.6. Then the last one down there, the 12.46 percent for the circulation of electronic materials as a percentage of total circulation. The state average is 11 percent. Just to kind of expand on that a little bit, you know, in my, my profession, I hear a lot of people talking about, well, eBooks are taking everything over. That's really not the case. Those, but that 12 percent is by about 10 percent of our registered users. Another comment that I hear, and if you dig back, there's a section further back in that report, that talks about the different types of circulations we have, print books, electronic things like that. There's a section in there that lists databases that has a huge number of usage. That is the new reference collection. Libraries in this day and age don't have a big print reference collection anymore. We're using databases that we subscribe to, that then we can provide that to people online. Enough boring stuff. Did you, when you looked through it, did you see anything that you wanted to ask me a question about? If not, I'll get out of your hair.
Mike, I'm guessing we saw the same information a year ago, and I gotta admit, I don't recall. I mean, what is the activity of the library compared to the recent past? I mean, more or less same?
We're, we're slightly up in some areas, down in others. We've seen a fairly large drop in interlibrary loan usage. There are a number of factors in that, that I could talk for about 45 minutes on, that, but the short part is that there were changes made at the state level of how requests are made.
Yeah, I'm kind of the same with, with Aman, that I don't recall ever seeing this report here.
This at the council?
Yeah.
That is a change. This is a report, I've said, that had been done every year for I don't know how long, actually. But this is the first year that the requirement has come, that it be presented to you. In the past, what has been required is that it be brought to the mayor's office, or the finance officer's office, and that was the end.
I like the report. It was very informative. Yeah, yeah, exactly, Glenn. Well, thanks, Mike. You guys got any questions for Aman this? Perfect. Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Short timer? Shh. I give them a bad time. We have our, we have our meeting tomorrow morning, our department had meeting, and I think just last month, I said you have five left. After tomorrow, there'll only be four left. You put up with me. Right? No comment?
Four more times, that'd give you a hard time.
Okay. Well, very good. I think we're gonna move on. Thanks again, Mike, for that report. That was very informative. Number four, discussion on maintenance of mall thoroughfare. I have a little video I'd like to share with you guys before we get going. Pete, you wanna do that for me?
You bet.
Lee, do you wanna step in and talk about this a little bit, or not?
That's your gift.
Okay.
There we go. The mayor was looking for some visual effects.
Need some voice there.
The mayor was looking for some visual effects, so he asked us to drive our patrol car through the lot, so he'll see it. You got the volume up? Yeah.
Wait till you're that car.
And just to be fair, we turned around and came back, too.
A little faster. And did you guys get it all hooked up? You're gonna get the front end realigned, then?
Yes. Private parking lot.
This was pretty funny. Thanks for doing that. I thought it was, it was kind of neat, you know? I think I was laying around Sunday or Monday night, and I wrote you a little email, I asked you to do that, if you guys could.
Happy to help out.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. All right. You can kill that beat. Yeah. It wa- it was kind of an interesting, uh, was that you Steve that drove the car through?
No.
Okay. All right, just checking. Well, I wanted to talk to you guys about, uh, something that's on the agenda tonight for maintenance on the mall thoroughfare. This is exactly the, where we're talking is exactly where this car drove through both ways. Shane, if I'm not mistaken, it's between eight and nine hundred feet long is what we're looking at. Uh, just so you know, this will be going on the agenda just tonight to ask you permission to allow me to have Rob go in and put some Mr. Pothole to fix some of the potholes out there. And then, uh, what the intent is, is, is when it's, when it's time, we can, we can work these potholes, keep them filled in, and then Shane will have a crew go in and put an inch and a half to inch and three-quarter inch, uh, pad over the top of asphalt. What we're hoping for is that we will get a two to three-year possible fix on this before twenty twenty-one. And we're not gonna be discussing the long-term fix on this thoroughfare. But what we are going to be talking about is something that's just short-lived. Two to three years is not a long time anymore on, on anything. So what we're looking at for this evening, uh, when I ask you permission to do this, it's a twenty thousand dollar repair is what we're looking at. Out of that twenty thousand dollars, I'm gonna give you a rundown on how this will be funded. Ten thousand dollars of this twenty will be paid for by the mall. Four thousand dollars by Hy-Vee, a thousand dollars by Arby's, a thousand dollars by Watertown Ford, two thousand dollars from Dakota Bank, one thousand dollars from First Bank, and one thousand dollars from Expressions. We have the twenty thousand dollars covered. Alls I'm asking for is that if it does come in just a little bit above that, which we don't expect, that the council would say, yes, city, you know, if it's, uh, twenty-one or twenty-one-five, we don't have to come back to the city for, for this, uh, requirement. If it comes in less, well, then it would just be turned back to the, the stakeholders that are out there. I think it's a good, it's a good plan. Really, our involvement would only be the, uh, initial repair of the potholes. And then Shane being the engineer that he is, he will have this, uh, this mat put on the top. So I'm opening it for questions. If anybody has any questions, what we're trying to do here.
I direct my question to Justin. Any legal precedents being set here using city funds to fix a private road? And does that commit us to future fixes? So what's the legal ramifications?
Councilman, to my understanding, there wouldn't be any sort of, uh, feet held to fire going forward. I, I know that there had been a, an argument or an, uh, an assertion that had been made, um, here a few months back about how, you know, there may have been a promise or something like that. But those, that, that is not something that the city council can be held to going forward because the appropriative act is a legislative act. It is not something that necessarily sets precedent for that reason. If this body were acting in an adjudicative capacity, there's the possibility that there may be something like that. But that's not the case with this kind of transaction.
Shane, with, with that type of repair, I think one of the big issues out there has been the lack of drainage. If you put another inch and a half on there, would you foresee issues as far as creating other low spots? Or how are we gonna handle that?
Well, doing an overlay won't correct any underlaying or, um, drainage issues. But the goal, as I understand it, is to hold the roadway together until a lo- more long-term fix can be identified and, and pursued. But, uh, certainly an inch and a half overlay is not gonna create a substantial amount of additional drainage issues that, with regard to what's currently there now. So it'd be very minimal impacts if, if any.
So are we saying, I just wanna make some, I wanna make sure I'm clear on something. There would be no expense incurred by the city unless we went over that twenty thousand dollars that we apparently, that the businesses are allocating for that fix. Is that true?
That is correct.
There'd be nothing as far as we're concerned. How far would we be willing to go beyond that if we did do that? That, that'd be a question I'd have for the mayor, I guess.
I think that's what I asked earlier. I, I said, you know, if it goes to twenty-one-five or, or right in that range. I, I really don't foresee anything. Uh, in fact, I would almost venture to say that we're gonna see it come in less than twenty.
And I would, I would say, being, I was with you the other day when you were making some of those phone calls, the, the way the people jumped in and, and were happy to help out. I would say if it did go over a little bit, if you had to go back and to the table a little bit and ask for a little bit more, that probably wouldn't be an issue, so.
Yeah, I would agree because when, my last conversation with Troy from Dakota Bank, he said, uh, they're willing to put in two thousand dollars. And he said, if you, if you absolutely have to come back to us, he says, uh, don't hesitate.
Shane, will this give us a decent fix for that two to three-year period? I guess that's my, my biggest concern, that we do it and a year from now, we got, we got the same mess again.
Well, certainly, excuse me. Tickling my throat, I apologize. Um, certainly the idea of the overlay, right now, a person could go out there and patch potholes on an annual basis. And pretty much what happens is you replace the previous pothole from last year, this year. And that's just an ongoing thing. If you put the overlay on it, hopefully what you've done is you've put a cap over the top of that and it holds the majority of the potholes in. Will there still be a few to fix during that one to two-year period? Absolutely will be some, but it'll be much, much less work-intensive to try to maintain that route with an overlay on it versus without. Without, you're essentially replacing every pothole every year, without doubt.
So that, would the process be to fill them and then lay right over the top of that? Or will there be any milling of that, um, over the top? How, how do you prepare those very deep holes that I drove through yesterday for an overlay?
Okay, so ideally, um, right, like at this time of year, for instance, we put coal patches in, which are sacrificial. They almost immediately come up, uh, you know, within months. So the idea is to, to, when we do fill these potholes, is to wait till a hot mix plant is open permanently. Or when I say permanent, I mean, it's a longer fix than the temporary, right? So you put a hot mix patch in there, you pack that in as tight as you can in it, in dry conditions, and then you lay this overlay on top of it. It's kind of like when you patch a, oh, a sheet rock wall, you know, you get your initial patch that you put in and then you try to spackle or something over the top of it and hold everything together. And that's same principle here, just different materials. There's no guarantee that I can give for how long it's gonna last, but it's certainly gonna be something that's maintainable over, throughout this one to two-year period versus, right now, you're, you're doing essentially reworking this area a hundred percent every spring at this point in time. Which is, you know, throwing money away.
And that is an inch and a half, is that what you said Shane?
Well, that's the idea. Um, you know, it, you don't wanna get too much more than that because then the edges, you gotta feather the edges down. And of course, snow plows and things don't like it when you have a inch and a half ridge. You know, it's kind of like when you plow your driveway, if there's a little half-inch bump, it hurts when you hit it with your plow. So that, we don't wanna create something much more than that.
Shane or Steve, maybe, either one of you can answer this. Would the, cause that's, that's one thing I see gonna be a problem is, is next winter, when they're moving snow, when they move the snow and plow it to the north into that field, is there any way they can work with us and not go that direction? Because they're gonna basically be going against the, the ridge on that road that way.
Yeah, they will. When, when they start heading to the north like that, they're gonna hit that ridge and pull it off. I, I don't see any, uh, reason why we can't talk to Alan or, or Kevin out there. And tell, Alan, when I talk to him from, from New York, they have all the property at the back. They can push their snow to the back. They don't really need to have it out there in the parking lot.
Or they can go to the west there too.
They can do anything. I, I would, I would say that we have to, uh, make sure they'll do that. But this is a project that they could really, right now at this, with all the dollars that are there, they could do this on their own. So there really isn't anything that we would have to do. It's just that I think in order to do it right, I believe our engineering has to be involved at least to make sure that, uh, we, we get the puddles patched and get this laid down.
Mayor, this is not gonna give any indication to the mall ownership of what to expect in the future, is it?
Absolutely not. Because you, as, as everyone knows, there's a longer-term fix that needs to be done. And I, and the mall will be coming forward to the city council. Mike, you sat in on some of the meetings already and know what they're expecting. But, uh, that will come at a future date. And, and if something does happen, it needs to be probably done before the twenty twenty-one fix of Hy-Vee two twelve.
Another thing we gotta look at, when we open that, uh, Five Field Softball Diamond down there and eventually the Ice Arena, we're gonna add more traffic onto that road. And we can, we can all say it's not a public road. We do put a lot of public traffic on that road, so.
Shane, how, how wide are we, are we talking about patching?
I believe I, my estimate was based on a thirty-foot wide, uh, pass. With that, thinking that there are some semi-truck deliveries that go through there. And I wanted to have at least a safe path for them to occupy the, the patch as well as the vehicles that would also travel. So about thirty feet wide.
Is, is that, I was out there today, I mean, is thirty feet gonna be sufficient?
Thirty feet is essentially the same width as the portion of the roadway that goes in front of Hy-Vee now. So I just kind of maintain that same width as my, my viewpoint.
Mayor, I, you, really what you've done here is you brokered a deal somehow to come up with this from, with the current landowners. And I, it, and just a comment, we've been dealing this for years. It really surprises me that we're, that we have to take the lead to get this done for somebody else's property. And I, I, I do commend you for doing it, but you've got the mall ownership here and, and the landowners that are paying for this.
That is correct.
And why have we put up with this for so many years? It's, it's frustration is what it is.
Yeah, I think somebody just needed to step forward and say, you know, let's, uh, see if we can come up with the dollars and get this done. And really, folks, uh, Dakota Bank and Hy-Vee and, and, and Arby's, Expressions, First Bank, they all want something done. They know that it needs fixing. And, and I think they realize that they have, they've gotta get on board to get this done. So, like I say, it's twenty grand. We raised twenty grand. Hopefully it won't go over. But, uh, tonight during the, the motion, we may need to have something that allows us to, uh, go a little bit above and beyond it. So it doesn't have to come to you. Any other questions?
The only thing I got as part of this, and we're just kind of, like you said, broke, you're brokering a deal here to get something better than what they got now. But do we have any wherewithal to put some kind of deadline on something in the future? Because three years from now, I'm not gonna be on the council, but I might be sitting out there complaining, so.
Right. No, I, I would say, Bill, that, uh, what's gonna be happening here is that as soon as this here gets done, Rob will be out there. His guys will start filling some of those holes tomorrow. Even though there are some wet holes on it, you, you'll have to blow them out, dry them out, whatever you do. But we're going to start, we'll put that group together again. Who was all in that? Randy, Mike, someone else? Bill, were you in that meeting with the mall? So anyhow, we'll get that group together and maybe throw in an extra person or two and see what, uh, see what comes out of it. And he may be here tonight at seven o'clock that he can, uh, can discuss it. So that's kind of what I wanted to run by on that particular, on the mall. Unless somebody has another question on it, I'm gonna move on. Kenny, uh, you wanna come forward here? Kenny is here tonight just to, to speak about dances in Watertown. He's, he's got really the light feet. He's gonna, okay, we're gonna turn, Pete, you wanna turn that music on now? All right, thanks man. We got that on video for you. So anyhow, Kenny wanted to, uh, we have, we've had, we've had businesses uptown that are looking at street dances. And rather than have them come directly to us all the time, we need to make sure how many, how many we want to have up there. And this is just a discussion on what we've seen last year. Chief, if you could come up also, I think it's interesting to hear some of the comments that you'll have also on the street dances and what we saw last year and, and, uh, what we should see this year. So Kenny, if you wanna just kind of tell us where we're at and what's going on.
Yeah, I just could give a short history. You know, right now, somebody wants a street dance, they'll come and bring a proposal to me. Uh, generally it's got a place where the site is, the date and the hours they wanna do it. And then I'll forward that over to the police department. They'll look at and give us any comments back. And then we'll take it back up to our little P and E group and every Tuesday morning and say yes, no, or maybe. And, and it's been going pretty smooth so far. Uh, this, basically our street dance has really started in about August twenty thirteen. Now Shooters has been the most primary person for doing this. You can see they did one in thirteen, they did two in fourteen. And the last two years consecutively, they've done three each year. And they now have a proposal again before us for another three for this year. Of course, the GOS also has their Saturday, Thursday Night Live scenario that runs through the summer. And they've also worked with, uh, Worth and Midcom to do a special night dance for them too. Uh, we've had a couple, uh, expressions from docs wishing to do a street dance and from Walraven possibly do a street dance. So again, so we're just looking for some input. How many of these do we wanna have? Location? I actually have another little map when we get to that point to say where that's at. And do we wanna limit to three? Wanna be doing this every, every other week or once a month? And if we do limit it, how are we gonna control who gets it and don't? So that's the topic for discussion.
Well, my, my comments are, it was just a matter of time before the other requests came in because they make money. Fair statement?
Yeah, ma- they must.
Yeah, they had big crowds. So let's assume they probably were very lucrative to run. And once that happens, it was, I was anticipating, I think we all were, that we'd see more people and more requests for these. At the same time, we're getting calls from people saying, we don't like these because they're too loud. So I think the intent was to limit them. Is that accurate?
Well, that's.
Initially?
Initially, yes.
The only thing I can say to this is it, it, it's gonna have to be kind of a round robin because I do think we need to keep these to a, a smaller number to respect the wishes of those that don't want the loud nights. And the other thing is, if, if it's becoming kind of a big deal, what about combining these? If those groups can get together and they can do, you know, a combination type of deal. That might get too big, I don't know. But I think you get beyond three. We're gonna get quite a, I, I believe we'll get a lot of complaints.
Can you put up, uh, a picture of, of downtown for us?
Yeah, I actually prepared one just for this meeting, so.
And Lee, you can kind of comment on, on what you're seeing right now for, for complaints.
Sure. Last year, there was five total street dances. The first one, we had two complaints. And, uh, the second one was kind of a smaller dance. We didn't have any complaints. Uh, the third one, we ended up with three. These are all calling to the nine-one-one center. The fourth dance, we had two complaints. And then the last one was Hairball, which is a louder band. We had thirteen complaints on that one. And a lot of the complaints, probably half, are basically, there's loud noise in my neighborhood, neighbors are having a party or something's going on in my neighborhood. We go there, we can hear it's the band come from downtown. Let them know that. And some of them are okay with it. Others are mad as heck. Um, they're gonna call their councilman tomorrow. They're gonna be at city hall in the morning, uh, whatever the case may be. A few of them have hung up on our dispatchers after saying a few profane words. Um, those type of calls. So that's the type of atmosphere we have out there.
What, what timeframe do we have for them shutting down right now?
The last couple of years, I believe, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they've asked for a nine-to-one timeframe.
Yeah, but I think we shut them down at midnight.
We tried. Actually, they wanted to go a little later. The first couple of requests were like one-thirty. And we were pretty much against that. I think last year, if I remember right, they went till one a few times. I see this year's request, they're asking to go till one again. To me, that's a little late.
I think it's way too late, quite honestly. And then, and I agree with Don that I've had people that have talked to me about this. You get both sides of this. It's great. But then the, the other side that people go, come on, it's just too much. And they aren't people that are calling in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There, there are people that are going, you know, what am I gonna do about it? Right? They're doing it. And so, you know, I don't have a good feel, you know, how many people are really upset with it. But I do know, I do hear they go too late. Um.
I think one of the problems has been, Mike, and, and one of you guys can comment about it, the, the direction that the, uh, Showmobile has been. What we're thinking about is maybe we specifically say the, the shooters or docs or whoever might have that, would put the Showmobile on the, on the.
North side, facing south.
Facing south on Maple. We really struggle with. We really struggle with closing all of Kemp, including all of Maple, it's not a good thing for us. And when they have the Thursday Night Live, maybe we bring that down to the south there, which is right in front of Kemp Avenue and close Maple down. So all the noise basically is going to your house, Brad. Yeah, we're just kinda hoping all the noise goes your way. But that's really where, you know, when we have it going to the north, we get a lot more complaints than when the noise is going to the south. And I think through here, the buildings do take some of that noise away. So it was just a thought that we've had and we wanna let you guys know that there are people wanting to have these dances.
Have we had it face the south? When you're saying face it to the south, because we've had complaints to the north. Do we know what happens if we face it south?
Shooters has never faced it the other way, they've always faced it to.
The north, yeah.
To the north. But I think the, if I'm not mistaken, when they do the Thursday Night Live, there's been numerous times when it's faced the south or even kinda kitty corners in there. Yeah. So we don't get any complaints when you have Thursday Night Live.
That one doesn't get very loud, does it?
Right, and that's done sooner too, yeah. The one thing I would say is if you're gonna point it south, is you got the Jenkins home down there, so just to keep that in mind.
Why wouldn't we maybe think about putting it towards the river?
I got one question with like, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, like when the guesthouse has one. Theirs is held on their private property, do they come to us for permission to do that one also, or?
No, in the past, I think they provided some security there or something, but no, they haven't come for a request. For a street dance, they're not closing a street, they're just holding it on there.
So in all reality, they could have one every weekend in their parking lot and there's nothing we can do about it?
I don't know, if there's nothing we can do about it, but if we had some noise issues, we could probably work through something.
And I've sat on my deck at home and I live way over on 12th Street and I've heard it when they've had it, of course.
No cover charge at home.
No, and it's way safer, so.
I think one of the things that we're looking for tonight, just for a little clarity, is, okay, how many dances can any one individual business have? Do you wanna limit it to two or three or four or five? Because it's hard to say, okay, you have to have one with GOS.
You can't really do it per business, it has to be like five of them with a lottery of some sort.
That's an idea, we could charge for that, the drawing.
I'm looking for anything for my.
How many have, have we had any applications so far this year, Kenny?
Yeah.
How many?
Shooters has turned in for three dates already.
Three dates, anybody else?
Not as of yet, no. But Shooters knows it does and they jump on it real early.
You have to get these bands booked far enough out, so that's why they're already asking about them.
And of course, the GOS has a Thursday Night Live all summer long already, so.
Yeah, and that one doesn't really generate a lot of problems, I mean, I can hear.
They keep that toned down and they're done by, is it 10 or 11 or something like 10, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, at the latest.
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, I think it is.
So even I can go to sleep, I mean, it's not too late, so.
Do we have a way of monitoring the amount of the sound levels? Like you said, Hairball was really, I mean, there's gotta be a way to get a decibel reading and then say, that's too loud, get it turned down, other than complaints, is there a way to do that?
A lot of it has to do upon the evening too, if it's a calm night or a windy night, really matters. I mean, I couldn't believe we were getting calls way up in Northridge, up there in the north, Mount Hope Cemetery. And they could hear it like they were at the band, they said.
And if the wind's blowing in the right direction, you know, that window'll carry it.
But, you know, decibel meters, I'm sure you could buy one and you could try to go somewhere and do it, but it would be different here, there and there, I mean, it would just vary so much.
Well, you take it at the point of the noise.
Yeah, and we've in the past gone and asked the bands to turn them down and they do, but it doesn't sound any different.
Well, I think you'll find in most of those cases, they may turn it down for a little bit, but somebody's reaching over there turning it back up. And I did discuss this with Mr. Bolt from Shooters last year for a little bit. And it's, you know, just voiced my opinion that, you know, if we're gonna continue allowing to have them, and yes, we wanna have them. I don't think there's anybody here that, you know, that's saying that we don't wanna have them, but somehow we gotta control the noise. You know, and if we get enough complaints, someplace we gotta draw the line and that's kinda why we're talking about it tonight, I guess, so.
I would think one of the things that 12 o'clock or something would, that must be able to be an okay thing. You start getting 1 o'clock in the morning and you do disrupt people and I think 12 o'clock disrupt people, but another hour, an hour and a half, that to me would be a legitimate thing.
I know in the past when we talked to them about cutting it back, if I remember right, the first year they were looking for like 1:30, we wanted to do like 12:30 and we compromised at 1. They're saying that most of the people that come out to those dances come later in the evening, 10:30, 11:00, and that's where they need to make their money until 1.
Well, they can just come earlier.
Yeah, well, that's what I say, Beth, I agree.
Well, I don't think it should be an option for them that we tell them to be done at, in the cases now at 1 and they're done at 1:30. That, if that's the case, you won't get another approval. I think we set a time and 1 seems very late to me as a community trying to find balance.
Those things will be discussed shortly when we start having them come forward. But I would like to kinda focus back in on numbers. That's really what we're after tonight, is numbers of them. They will go by whatever we tell them for times.
One thing about it, if you have too many of them, pretty soon, none of them are gonna drop, put it that way. I mean, there's only a number of them that you're gonna have because it is a special event and pretty soon you have one every weekend, it's not special anymore, it's just an event. So I think you'll pretty much limit it south.
You know, and frankly, a place like Docs, when Shooters has one, you know, I mean, they benefit from that.
Yeah, all of them do.
They do.
Yep.
What's been the progression, I mean, how many do we have the first year we kinda started doing this?
I think it was two or three, three, wasn't it?
Three to five.
We started out one and last year we had five. Well, three for Shooters, five total because the guys had two.
Right.
That doesn't count the Thursday Night Live, right?
No, that does not, no.
I think that's a mainstake, I don't.
Can we differentiate that, or do we need to count that?
I think so.
No, I think that can.
My opinion is that's kinda become a, just a part and parcel of downtown life.
Well, I think just my question is, can somebody argue, well, that goes on, what's different with mine, so I just wanna.
Well, and that's been brought up before, Bill, I mean, that's one thing that's been said, well, they do it every week at the GOS, why can't we do it? You know, but there is some limits to that.
If you put it at 10, you can.
Yeah.
Well, also, I mean, if you're gonna put some kinda limit on it, do you include the GOS or you don't? And if you don't include it, how do you decide that that's a different than the other?
Well, Thursday Night Live isn't just the GOS, so, I mean, yeah, they're the ones that host it, but I don't think that's where it originated from and they've just been gracious enough to always host it. It's kind of an uptown, no, excuse me, downtown, stand politically correct, it's an event for downtown, put it that way, so.
But to me, the number depends on what the rules are. If there's, if it's gonna go till 1, 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning, then my allowable number in my brain is less than it is if we're, say, we're gonna get them out of there at midnight. You know, so it really comes down, because I wouldn't sit here and have anything to say negatively about the Thursday Night Live because it's not as loud, starts earlier and ends earlier. You know, so these things, if it was along those lines, I would, to be honest, I really don't care so much as.
I truly don't think any of us here would allow a band to go till 1:32. And if they have, then there needs to be something done on your side with whoever's in charge of it. So if we, if we look at a 12:30 timeframe, I think three is probably enough, you know.
You know, 12 and you'll be lucky if you get them done by 12:30.
I'm just gonna add too, I think if we set a number, we say, here's the maximum number of these we're gonna do in a season besides Thursday Night Live, a weekend street dance type thing. Then we gotta find an equitable way to allow different businesses to utilize that. You know, you say, yeah, Shooters already with two or.
Three requests.
Three requests already. I mean, that's gonna take up a big chunk of whatever number we put in. So we're gonna have to find a way to allow other people to get a night if we decide on a number.
I think what they're more inclined to do, Bruce, is how many per individual business? I mean, are you going to allow three and not four?
Yeah, and it might be, maybe we say it's a maximum of two.
I think it needs to be so many per individual business, like I say, it's a special event. You're only gonna have so many of them in the summertime or else nobody will make any money off of them.
So I think that's kinda where we're going, Kenny, so thank you, guys. I know we're gonna ask you for a little more input on this as time goes on.
Just so you know, how many bars are downtown?
I don't know.
Five, six, seven, if they all get one, that's gonna be six or 12.
Yeah, I don't agree with the one per business.
The way I would see it, Brad, is you're gonna set it up, you're gonna say, here's how many we're gonna do. Say the city's gonna do five, it's first come, first served, you get two maximum, maybe that's how we look at it. Or let them work it out among themselves, who's gonna do it?
Yeah, I'm okay with anything.
Then, you know, later on tonight, we're gonna talk about taxis and we're talking about limiting business.
We're not talking about taxis.
Yeah, well, we're still limiting business, so, yeah, we are.
Well, okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Shane, I wanna bring you up now, a little bit about the First Avenue South. Gentlemen, we're gonna talk about First Avenue South, this is gonna be on the uptown and two-way traffic.
Pete, can you put my screen up?
Downtown. Okay. Okay, gentlemen, we're gonna get going on this here, we're gonna have Shane talk about this. Go ahead, Shane, start talking and then I'll start listening.
Okay. This, what I have on the screen is a representation of our review of the signage and along the route. This is Third Street West continuing to the east. And then it cuts, splits the screen so I could show more on one example. But for instance, we identified where the stop signs are, where any one-way signs are, and then these emergency snow routes. Most of these emergency snow routes are actually on those poles, but they are facing view from one direction and we would propose to turn them around or as needed for, you know, the alternate direction of traffic. We would eliminate one-way signs. So with that, we've been working with the street department as well to kinda identify what we think it would take to modify signage as well. And the street department indicated that it would take about $750 for signs and materials along that route, so. Whoops, I'll just get out of that. So, just walk through it, I mean, and then the discussion really comes into the intersection of Broadway and first, that's a light, currently a signaled intersection, is that something that we wanna go to? Do we wanna maintain the signal or do we wanna modify it to just be four-way stops? I personally like the four-way stop idea because there's always maintenance to the lights. But, so that's one of the things that we're weighing in on. Just to demo out, the existing light system was about $22 to $2,500, I think, something like that. But, you know, it's a one-time cost, then you put your stop signs up and away you go. So that's kinda what we've been weighing on and you kinda see on the bottom panel here is where I, we started looking at how we would stripe the diagonal parking along there. And then, of course, we identified where the handicap spots are. And we may wanna, as we do this project, we may wanna move those handicap spots to an end of the block, one end or the other, because it's a little bit more logistically friendly for the individuals that use them. In other words, we know we're gonna have handicap ped ramps at the intersection. We may or may not have a handicap accessible ramp right here by the alley. So those kinda things, we've been talking about, whoops, I got too many things open, sorry. But we did that all the way throughout the whole length of the project. The other estimate that I'll throw at you is about $1,000 for restriping the five-block area, which is our primary thing, and that's really, so those are low-cost things. We have talked about how do we get rid of the old stripes? And I don't know if it's just fate or what, but First Avenue South is actually kinda rising towards the top of our mill and overlay program and we could actually mill and overlay portions of all of the street route to get it back to a more longevity-type pavement and, you know, by ourselves 10, 15 years if we milled and overlaid it, rather than just chip sealed it, then ultimately we'd have to mill and overlay, you know, down the road. But, so those are the kinds of things that the street department and the engineering department are weighing on. We can do a combination of seal coats to cover up striping or, like you said, mill and overlay. And we do have budgets for both of those type of construction issues, so it's just a matter of, if we're gonna do this, how and what budget are we gonna use? So it's not a big, big thing. The biggest thing, of course, in this whole scenario, and Rob will have to chime in on it a little bit, is the modification of the intersection of Highway 81.
Yeah, the information you guys that I got, I got a quote from Engelstads to do some of the work on this. At the intersection of Highway 81, we were quoted $2,550 to modify the current signal lights for an intersection for a two-way street. The only thing is, that was not quoted with a left turn arrow. Now, if we wanna, the big thing too, I gotta work with the state to find out if they're gonna require a left turn arrow and if that's something we want anyway. As far as Broadway, First Avenue and Broadway, to modify that intersection, it was $3,400. That would be used in the current cabinet that's there and it's an outdated cabinet. But if there's no problems, we'd be able to use that. As far as Broadway and First Avenue, if we decide to completely eliminate that intersection, we'd be at $2,525 to demo the lights, basically, and take care of all the wiring and that type of thing.
Do you guys, oh, I'm sorry.
And I think Shane had mentioned about the $750 bucks for the sign materials and to convert to a two-way and about $1,000 for the five blocks for all the striping, so.
So can you guys give me a grand total here of, just quick, do the math in your head, hurry, of just these things you've talked about, the simpler, the signage, the striping, obviously the mill and overlay is gonna be a little bit more. So signage, striping, the lights, those kinds of things, did you add it in your head?
We got about $7,500 bucks.
Yeah, it's less than $10,000, I'll round it off to a simple figure. But, you know, and obviously, the more difficult semantics is what angle do you have your angle parking? And we did choose a little bit more extreme of an angle to give us a couple more inches or a foot, you know, of space between the moving traffic and the parked traffic. So we've kinda anticipated what we would get for feedback from the public.
Yeah.
To try to make it a little more user-friendly. Now, one other thing I will say that's been tossed around in this whole discussion is, do we leave the speed limit at 25 or do we reduce the speed limit? Those kinda things are also discussion points. My personal opinion is that you would leave it at 25 and the traffic calming, we call it, is when you perceive that the roadway is narrow and you're gonna be cautious because you think somebody's gonna inch out in front of you backing up, that you're gonna drive slower, you're gonna drive with more caution and more awareness. And you do that just by making those physical changes rather than changing the laws, so.
One of the things to also keep in mind as you're looking at striping and some of the handicapped accessible areas, one of the biggest problems or complaints that I get about downtown parking is that somebody pulls in a Suburban right on the corner and nobody can see around it. So what I've been looking at in other communities is they take those corners and they either say motorcycle parking only, compact car parking only, and they limit the size of the vehicles that go right up to the 30 feet in, you know, that hit in those corner areas. Yeah, so that you have a good sight triangle with the smaller vehicles who falls as that, you know, there, and it works. You know, it makes it so that, you know, somebody doesn't try to pull a big ol', you know.
Right.
Shane, when you laid that out, do we lose any, did you have to change the angle of the parking at all?
We do lose a few, if we change the angle and rearrange these a little bit, we do lose a very few spots per block. It's not, not much. I'll give you for an example, and the page I have up there right now, existing spaces was 426. existing spaces was four twenty-six, after would be four twelve. So, you know.
Thank you.
So frankly, when I look at this and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're going to do a mill and overlay anyhow, right?
At some point in the lifetime, yeah.
So that's not something that we're, we're looking at as a big expense just to go two-way on this. You're also going to do striping on it next summer anyhow, all right? So that shouldn't be really included. Just because we're going to do that, it's included in this expense. I don't think it's a big expense and I think what we're going to do is Shane and Rob are going to move forward to get this accomplished this summer and, and get this road going to two ways. So we wanted to bring this in front of you guys so you knew it was happening and we would like some input. Probably not tonight. I'm going to, I'm going to close this up here now just real shortly. But we just want to let you know the goal that we're having on First Avenue. I think it's important that we all at least understand what the direction is we're moving with this.
Are we only talking about First Avenue right now?
Just First Avenue. Not Kemp.
The only question I got is basically the Broadway intersection. And you said stop sign. Why wouldn't that just be a two-way stop like it is on Second and just let Broadway be through Third Street?
I tend to agree.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I guess I'd like to follow up or expand on Beth's question. I mean, are we looking at, I mean, this is only First Avenue. Are we looking at this as a test, as a test run then as far as what we decide to do on Kemp eventually?
I think that's exactly what we're looking at. We want to get this done. It's, it's a couple of feet wider, if I'm not mistaken, one or two feet wider than Kemp Avenue.
Not when it gets close.
It, it would be, this would be a good project for, for Rob and for Shane and it would be a positive for uptown, I think.
I don't think it'll do.
Or downtown, whichever one you prefer. Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We'll be back at seven o'clock for the city council meeting.